Thank you.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting for Interviews and Town Business, Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, beginning at 4:00 P. M. We are pleased this afternoon to have two applicants for our open position of Highway Superintendent. And this afternoon for our first applicant, we are happy to introduce Patrick Marterosian. We each have several questions for you. We'll be asking them preferably one at a time so that we don't overload you with too many questions at one time. Okay?
No problem.
All right. I would like to begin with first, why did you apply to OCAM?
Well, I have been working with you municipalities for quite a while. Started in OCAM, moved to Holden, also was working with the police department and Hardwick New Braintree for a while. I like municipalities. I like the way they run. You know, it's more or less of, it feels like a safe job. And, you know, OCAM, I grew up in OCAM. I was lived in OCAM, born and raised for 26 years. I currently live in Paxton, you know, just a few minutes over the line. But, you know, I, I'm a one of the lead equipment operators for Holden DPW right now. I've just gotten kind of to a point in my career where I can stay where I am or I can keep progressing forward. You know, there's that time in your life where you kind of have to make that leap if you want to become more. You know, it's, yeah, I, I don't want to be stuck in a piece of equipment for the next 20 to 30 years. It's, I, I can see what it does to people. You know, I've talked to a lot of people and at some point you just have to, you know, take control and, and be the, be the bigger person to make the decisions. So that's where I am.
Okay, thank you. You said one thing that I, I would just like to get your input on. You said you considered it being a safe job?
Yeah, I, I, I look at town jobs as more of a, is a, is a safe job, you know? There's always work, you know, it, it's a town, whether it's OCAM or Holden or, or any other town really. You know, it's, you know, you have your job, you know, you get your 40 hours. And, you know, it's, it's more or less to me, it's like, you know, there's retirement involved, there's benefits involved. Things that I look at towards the future, especially me and for my family. You know, this nowadays, you know, you go work for subcontractors or, you know, other companies that, you know, they don't offer benefits. They don't offer guaranteed set hours. They don't, they don't really offer that stuff. So when you come to a town job, as I learned when I was younger, it's just kind of the place to be. Some other people don't look at it that way, but it's kind of the way I look at it.
Because when you said safe job, to me, it doesn't always seem like safe job. You're out digging and working with heavy machinery.
You have a point. It's, it's, it has its dangerous aspects. There's dangerous parts of the job. But to me, it's more of like a home job. It's kind of like, you know, you, you have the comfort of being in a position where, you know, it's, it's a guarantee.
Okay.
The, the work aspect of it, yes, there is some very dangerous things that can happen, yes.
Just so long as I know that you're aware of OSHA and the regulations for the job as well.
Absolutely.
Why do you think we should hire you?
Uh, well, I, I come from a background, you know, as, as a kid, I loved equipment, growing up, operating equipment, being outdoors. I have been told that I was, I was the, the different child. You know, I went to Pathfinder vocational. I was a very hands-on kid, still very hands-on. You know, when it comes to mechanics and working on things, I just, I, I'm not afraid to get down and dirty. So, you know, the initial aspect is when I started getting into operating equipment, you know, it, it just was kind of one of them things that felt right. And I liked working, you know, in municipalities and, you know, it was, the biggest thing is, is that most of the time, if not all the time, you're working in the same place. You're in the same town, you're not traveling. You kind of, you know, you get to know the lay of the land, you get to know the roads. I know OCAM very well. It's just one of those things that, you know, it's a comfortable job, I feel, I'm capable of doing. I've been in, you know, municipality work. I've seen both, you know, the road construction hands-on. And I've also seen the aspect of behind the scenes, behind the desk aspect of the job. And, you know, it's like, again, I, it's, it's kind of gotten to the point in my life and career where I feel like I want to make the leap and, you know, be that supervisor, be the one to make those decisions. Yeah.
Okay. What do you have that you feel uniquely qualified for in this job?
I mean, I can't say I have one unique thing that I'm qualified for, but I know I'm qualified for probably 99% of the things that the job requires. I have my two-way hydraulics license, my one-C hydraulics license, which is telescoping booms without cables. It's more or less like man lifts, forklifts and stuff. I have my four-G roadside mowing license. I have my four-E catch basin cleaning license. And I also have my three-A, which is electric hoists operation. So, you know, any type of overhead cranes in a garage or anything used for mechanics or, or any sort, even now they require them for car lifts. So they, they, that was kind of like a Holden requirement. And, you know, I was glad to get it. I'm glad to get licenses because, you know, they go everywhere where you go. So, you know, whether I get it somewhere else or I just get it for myself, it's always going to be with me. I do have my Class B CDL tanker has matte air brakes. And I've been driving trucks since the day after I turned 18. That's when I got my license.
So you feel very qualified.
I, I feel enough qualified on the hand, on, you know, the hands-on aspect of the job. I can't say I'm 100% qualified for behind the desk, but I did go to Quinn Sigeman Community College for business. I didn't completely graduate because it wasn't 100% of what I wanted to do. But I have a very good knowledge of how to use Word, Excel, Business Office. Being as a police officer, I wrote dozens and dozens of reports of how things need to be worded, how to apply for things and, and the aspect of just having computer technology to know what needs to be done in an office, how much time you should spend in an office and how much time you should spend on the road. So that was a big thing. I feel qualified enough to take the leap and, and do as best as possible and do to my very best. You know, to not only, you know, make the townspeople happy, but make my guys happy. And, you know, make everybody happy. That's the goal.
Okay. Thank you so much. Don?
Pat, what's your safety protocol when using machinery and chemicals?
When it comes to safety, I'm, you know, I'm probably one of those guys at work that initially is the one that's looking out for the safety. Because, well, I mean, there's, you know, incidents happen. But we are all required and I, I, I don't have any disagreements with it. Hard hats at all times when any type of equipment is running, whether it's a loader, excavator, backhoe. You know, that you, your head is what keeps you going. So if you don't have that, then you got nothing. So I'm big on gloves too. I wasn't as big on gloves before I got into municipality work. But it's honestly changed my life. I'm more the aspect of, you know, I'm not deteriorating my hands as quickly. Whether you're raking, you're shoveling, you're working on something mechanically, you know, with gas, chemicals, break clean, whatever it may be. Wearing gloves is huge. You know, my hands aren't as dry anymore. I don't get calluses as bad, you know? I'm not losing fingernails. So that's, it's, it's definitely, you know, big. Same with safety glasses. You know, I already have enough problems with my eyes. So I don't want to be losing any eyeballs. So, you know, safety glasses is big too. You know, you're grinding or spraying any type of chemicals and such that's, you know, it, it requires common sense enough to know, be like, yeah, I need to wear something. You know, I, I do feel it should be enforced because if something does happen, then it's a report to write. And then there's a worry some of what's going to happen to that, you know, that employee. So safety's, safety's big. I do have my OSHA 10. I got that just right out of high school. That was a requirement. I was glad to get it. We do a lot of recertification courses, especially with roadwork, you know, backup alarms are a big thing. I mean, there's like over 10,000 deaths just within the state of Massachusetts every year for people being run over because there's no backup alarms. You know, it's a big safety hazard. There's just a lot of things to know when you're in roadwork, traffic's traveling all the time, even if the road is closed, there's through traffic, people are trying to get to their houses. And you may not be paying attention, but so isn't the driver. They may not be paying attention. So head on a swivel 24/7 and, you know, try to stay as safe as possible. That's the goal. Go home at the end of the day.
If several machines stopped working simultaneously, how are you going to prioritize the repairs for these things?
It, it depends on the season, to be honest. Winter time, you know, I know with budgeting, you know, you have your yearly and then you have your winter budget. You know, if it's in the winter and it, it has something to do with snow removal operations, that is like key. Because if we can't remove soot, snow, we can't keep the roads treated, that doesn't all, you know, cause a problem for the town, but it causes problem for safety as well. So snow removal is big, you know, if it's a plow truck and something happens, whether it's a sander, a plow, the truck itself, to me, that would be priority, you know? You never know when snow is going to pop up. I mean, we're in New England, so weather changes in the hours. You know, summertime, spring, fall, all things to consider. You know, sweepers break down a lot. We have a lot of breakdowns in Holden with sweepers. It's just because they're a commonly used machine that's ran four to five, six months out of the year. And, you know, it's continuous eight to 10 hours a day. So, you know, if the roads need to be swept, it may not be, you know, need to be fixed right away, but it should be fixed, you know, with a reasonable amount of time so we can finish sweeping and continue on. Roadside mowing, you know, that's, that's another thing, you know, depending on the, the time of the year, if it's the season to roadside mow, then we would try to do our best to, you know, fix it. And if, you know, if it's capable of doing so, you know, and all things are replaceable at some point. Some things, you know, if they can't be replaced, then you outsource. There's plenty in other, other municipalities around. You get to know them well, then, you know, you do a favor for them, they'll do a favor for you. You know, Holden was one of the mutually towns that went out and helped Princeton after the severe flooding we had. You know, we were over there for two, three weeks and, you know, we helped them and at some point maybe they'll help us. But, you know, if something goes down and we're in a bind, then you reach out. You, you do the best you can to overcome the situation. It's just kind of one of them things, as long as it gets the job done and it's safely, then we can figure other things out after.
Was about a time where you disagreed with a superior's direction? What did you do and how did it end up?
I mean, there has been some instances, you know, it's not, it's not an uncommon thing where people get into, you know, disagreements at work. I mean, it happens everywhere, no matter what job you have, there's going to be a disagreement. One, there's a, you know, there's things that I've come to disagreements on, especially with safety. You know, before I was in municipalities, you know, there was a time where I was working for a company. You know, they wanted to save money and they didn't believe in, not that they didn't believe in safety, but they weren't prioritizing for the proper PPE that needed to be to perform the job. And it was one of my reasons for leaving at the time. You know, I didn't feel safe. I was an HVAC technician. I was dealing with oil and soot and, and chemicals and everything. You know, I don't want to go home at the end of the day smelling like an oil burner. So it was at the time where, you know, I just, I, I didn't want, I had, you know, heard horror stories of people going to hospitals with, you know, soot it up lungs and stuff. So masks and gloves and safety glasses, those were all big factors that I looked into because, you know, I want to be around when I have kids. So, you know, I had some disagreements on that with, with an individual company. You know, the supervisor and the company itself, you know, and at that point I figured that, you know, if that wasn't the place I needed to be, I needed to be somewhere else. You know, I've had disagreements with, with, in supervisors before, but it's nothing to the point where I walked away. There's always a way to resolve a situation. You know, whether it was in police work or it was in municipality and digging, you know, there's always aspects, especially with digging, of making sure you know where everything is, you know, dig save's a big part of it. With Holden, we have waters, water mains, sewer mains and electrical. So making sure the job is properly marked out before starting, that is a big thing that, you know, we, we try not to disagree on, you know, that we know the job needs to be done, but we know that it needs to be marked. So there, there has been some instances, but to me, there's nothing. I've had nothing to the point where I've said, I've had enough and I've had to walk away and end the situation. You know, I feel there's always a, a way to resolve things. So.
Thanks. Mike?
Okay. Pat, have you ever encountered negative feedback from the public property owners? You know, when you're out working on a job on a street?
Well, absolutely.
And how did you handle it, diffuse it or make it good?
Absolutely. You know, there's with working with the town of Holden, town of Holden's very, you know, it's, it's big. There's a lot of road mileage. There's a lot of residents. There's a lot of new developments. You know, and with the shortage of employees throughout the year, there's some things that just doesn't end up getting around to. You know, we didn't end up sweeping, I'd say probably half the town, maybe close to it, just because we didn't have the manpower to do it. So when you're driving down the road and you're sweeping and people are honking at you and trying to make you pull over because they want to know when their street is being swept. You know, it's one of them things where you have to look at the situation entirely, you know, talk to them. Hi, I'm Patrick Marterosian. I'm an equipment operator. We're trying to sweep and get the town as, you know, done as much as possible. We're doing main roads and then we'll do secondaries. You know, what community do you live in? Try to explain to them that, you know, things probably are, need to be prioritized, you know, main roads are a big priority with all the construction that has been going on. That's unfortunately been a setback. But, you know, there's always been confrontations with the public. Unfortunately, some people have disagreements the way that things, you know, are done. When roads are being closed and, you know, it's, you know, it, it affects their, their day. So, you know, they end up taking it out on you. And the biggest thing is, you know, let them rant on, let them take it out on you and then tell them you're sorry. And, you know, you, you notify supervisor and you move on with it, you know? There's no reason to snap back at them. There's no reason to, you know, make the confrontation even bigger into what it is. You know, there's no point of losing your job over somebody who's having a bad day. So, you know, I'm, I'd say out of all the guys I've worked with and probably majority of my life, I'm a people person. So when someone usually comes over and talks to us at a job, I'm the one that has to talk to them. So, you know, I, I understand having to talk to people. You know, as being a former police officer, I had to talk to people every shift, you know, had to talk to the public, had to speak to people. You know, whether they liked it or not, you know, things had to be said and things had to be done. So it, it's dealing, being a part of the public and supporting the public is, is, you know, crucial to the job. The municipality are there to, you know, you're there to support the town. You're there to make the public happy. So you do whatever you can to do that.
Describe a, a work-related job or project that you were kind of responsible for, you know, either as a lead or a, that you found very rewarding.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, what job have you done?
Absolutely.
That you felt really great about when it was done type of thing?
You know, working for the town of Holden, the DPW, they, you know, they always have projects going on. So being one of the lead equipment operators, they, you know, they kind of assign you a job and they kind of just say, here's the plans, this is what needs to be done. You know, take a couple of guys and go do it. You know, we do, we redo a lot of roads and we're, we do a lot of work in-house. So we're responsible for replacing catch basins. We're responsible for replacing culverts, drainage, whether or not in water and sewer, that's more of a subcontracted thing. But, you know, redoing roads in a project in itself is, is rewarding. You know, I've replaced a lot of catch basins. I've been in the hole. I've dug the hole. I've, you know, set the basins. You know, to me, it's more of a satisfying feeling when we lay a lot of berm. So we have a specific machine that puts out berm. And it's one of them things I look at, it's like hot Play-Doh. And, you know, the way the machine's fed and the way, you know, it berms, you know, when the public looks at it and they see a berm that does this, that, you know, they're thinking like, who, you know, who did that? You know, it's like they had their glasses on. So laying a really straight berm or digging a catch basin and putting exactly where it needs to go and, and doing that stuff and then seeing the end result is rewarding to me.
So when I look at your resume, say when you go out to do a catch basin and you're the, I guess the term is the lead.
Lead operator, yep.
How many people would be with you that you would be directing?
So if the.
Whenever that day's project was.
Right. So if I was the lead operator that day, I would be in the excavator, rubber tire excavator. You know, the, the basin would be laid out. Our foreman's very good about having DigSafe come lay out, make sure everything's labeled. He would usually go over the project of what we're doing and then we would essentially just start. I'd normally have, it's hard to say because.
Well, I realize every day it could be different.
Yeah, well, yeah. And being so shorthanded, you know, some days we have two guys, some would days we have four. On a good day with four guys, you know, you'd, you'd have two to three dump truck drivers. And then you'd have one guy on the ground watching the hole at all times, making sure you're not going to hit anything, water mains, sewer mains, electric, laterals, anything of that nature. So, you know, as being an operator, you're responsible 100% with everybody that's on the ground. You know, with all the classes and licenses that I've had, that I've heard nothing different that when you're an operator, you're 100% responsible. You're responsible for the loads that you're putting out, making sure the trucks aren't overfilled, they're not overweight. You know, if that load doesn't look secure, I'm the one that loaded it. I'm responsible, not the truck driver. You dig a 10-foot, 10, 12-foot hole for a catch base and someone goes down in that hole, you're responsible for the person that's down there. Whether, make sure the, you know, the hole's sloped, make sure there's not water pouring into the hole. Making sure it's 100% safe, there's a ladder in the hole. You're responsible for that person. You know, traffic, you know, making sure cones are laid out, sign, men working signs are put out, everybody has their hard hats on, whether or not we have details. You know, that basically everything, there's a lot there to put into the aspect of making sure everybody needs to be where they're supposed to be. Whether you're driving a truck, whether you're getting stone or material or taking it out, whether you're in the hole or not, how deep you need to be, how level the basin's going to be, making sure it's going to come up the grade and, and where it's supposed to be. You know, there's been instances where we've rushed and you put the basin in and the top of the basin comes to the level of the asphalt. And you're like, well, that's not right. So, you know, it's supposed to have within six to eight inches below the asphalt because you need adjusting. If the road height ever changes, then you have that six to eight inches to adjust the frame. So that, you know, that's the goal. But being an operator, you know, it happens, you know, you know, every other day or, you know, once a week or whatever, if I'm the lead. And, you know, it's, it can be stressful because there's a lot going on, whether the road's open, the road's not open, how many guys are there, whether you're going to get material or not. There has been situations where you do end up hitting something, a water main, a sewer lateral, anything like that. And then when you have a situation like that, you take it step by step. You know, you, you stop the situation, you address it, you know, contact the supervisor, you let them know what's going on and then you fix it. You know, you find out whatever you can to make the whole safe if it's not. And you go in and you fix the solution, fix the problem, you come up with a solution and then you continue on. So there's been some instances where, you know, I've been in control of three or four other guys and, you know, you have to, you know, lead them in the right direction, you know, you, you have to, you can't just say, hey, go get me some dirt. You know, you, you know, hey, go get me a load of crush and run from, you know, whether it's Holden trap rock or, you know, it's at the garage and we have it, or go get me a load of three-quarter stone. Like you have to be specific. You have to make sure that they're not going to lollygag about it. You know, when you have an open hole in the ground with cars driving by, it's not something you want to leave. So.
Yeah, yeah, good. That's all I got.
Okay. Patrick, what would you consider to be your best strength?
I mean, maybe a, a people person. You know, I'm, I'm, I get along with everybody, just about everybody that I know. You know, I, I can, you know, address situations, come up with solutions and, and talk to, you know, whoever I need to talk to. You know, there hasn't been really any situations that I can think of where I've, I've, you know, went into and say, you know, I try to avoid it, you know, I don't want to talk about it, you know, I'd, I'd rather be upfront about it, talk about it and, you know, said what needs said. You know, on the same subject, maybe one of my biggest downfalls is I ask a lot of questions. I like asking questions, you know, I like to know the 100% as many details as possible. Just because, you know, that you, you, you can never get enough information. So I just, I like to ask questions.
Well, that was going to be my next question. What was your biggest weakness?
Yeah.
That would for me, that's good. Thank you.
Well, that's not necessarily a weakness.
Yeah.
No.
The question you don't ask.
Yes.
As a superintendent, how would you balance your work life to your personal life?
Work life and personal life is, uh, is, it's one of them things that you, you have to know how to manage. You know, I'm, I'm married with possibly kids in the future. So, you know, that's important to me. You know, family life is very important. And work is also very important. It depends on, and again, it also depends on the season. You know, there's time where you can be away and you can have fun and then there's times where things need to be done. You know, right now, it, with Holden being a busier town and a lot of roads and a lot of, you know, when it comes to winter time, come November, I look at the wife and I say, I'll see you in April. You know, so, you know, we, we put in a lot of hours. And, you know, there's a lot of times where, you know, I may not be home, but, you know, there's time where you can make up for that. You know, I, I look at it as, is, you know, work is important during certain, not saying during certain times, work is always important, but there's times to where you need to be 100% there and, and working and making sure things are being done. And, you know, then there's some other times where, you know, you can take your vacations and you can lean off and say, okay, you know, we don't have to rush this. We can, you know, we can slow down and make sure it gets done and, you know, it's done properly. You know, managing workloads is probably something I've had to do for a long time. I've basically always worked two jobs, basically my whole life since high school. You know, I was working for OCAM as the driver laborer and I was also being a police officer at the same time. I know I do a couple of shifts a week. So, you know, I've worked during the day and then go do a shift and then I wouldn't be home till later on. You know, that continued into Holden. And then I wouldn't be home till later on, um, you know, that continued into Holden. Um, and then when the police uh career, I should say, kind of halted and came to an end. Due to, you know, um, government, federal issues, the, um. You know, I had a lot of friends that said, hey, become a firefighter, it's a lot easier. I said, all right, um, so I I did, I went through another whole academy. Um, you know, became a call ball firefighter for the town of Paxton, um, and uh. You know, so, um, you know, you 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 have your workload of your full-time job and then you have your workload of your part-time on-call job. And then you have, you know, your family life, family's very important to me. Um, you know, I wanna be there on birthdays and Christmases and as many holidays as possible. But sometimes, you know, when when work calls, you gotta go, you know, so.
Thanks.
You're all set, I. I just have one or two more smalls.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to wind up on, which uh is important to me as well as your understanding of the Wetland Protection Act.
Yes. So Wetland Protection Act, um, I I mean, it's big in um everywhere. It's, you know, there's a lot of things to uh consider, especially when it comes to culverts, strains, strains, runoffs. Um, you know, we just had the same situation in over in Holden. Um, I'm not sure if any of you guys have ever driven Quintupox Street, there was a failing culvert. Um, unfortunately, the state owns half of it and the town owns the other half.
Right.
Um, so there was a big wetlands thing that had to be done, um. I- in this case, a subcontractor was hired, um, you know, it went out for bid and it was, you know, done. Um, but it had to be done properly, you know, there was a pump system put in, there was special pipe that had to be put in, the special stone and rock that needs to be put in. We went in and cleaned it up after, there was types of loom we had to use, types of seed we had to use, types of plants and bushes that we had to plant for erosion control and such. Um, I I have worked with it before in in some instances, uh, I know we've, you know, come across it here in OCAM. Um, at a time or two, um, it's just something you have to to look out for and consider, you know, when going to.
And when you find a wetland, what do you do?
Uh. As like an issue, when it comes to an issue or like a wetland, meaning like if I'm working in the area?
If you're working in the area, you're of course gonna stop immediately.
Right, well, when you have a wetland and you're working, you have to apply for a wetland perm, is it a permit? Or?
There are several, so you you would have to apply, to whom would you apply?
Uh, the Conservation Committee?
The Conservation Commission.
Commission, okay.
And you would have to hold a hearing then, and then they would tell you how to move forward.
Correct.
And then if DEP wants to get involved, they will also get involved.
Right.
And that would be the same if anything hazardous happened in town also, you would contact the Conservation DEP.
Okay.
And those boards usually take over.
Right.
On what needs to be done, but you will be asked to help with the cleanup usually.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
On something like that, I I just find that very important because we do have an active conservation commission in this town.
Absolutely.
And being a small town, every time there's wet somewhere, you know, somebody's gonna call and say, should they be working here, should they be working there? Do you have a file that we can see of the work that's going to be done and we have to be able to respond to that as as well?
Absolutely.
And I have one last question I've asked for everybody that's ever come here, what is the the ratio between sand and salt?
Uh, well, personally, to me, it depends on the type of salt you use. There's a lot of different types of road salt that can be used, there's rock salt, which is the white stuff. Um, and then you have your uh calcium chlorified salt mix, which is like the brine that you see the statements down. Um, you know, they have that rock salt mix, um, if it's just an ordinary salt that, from what I know, OCAM used. Um, it would be like a seventy sand, thirty salt or a sixty forty sand salt. Um, it depends, honestly, it depends on the type of situation, um, weather-wise. And also the types of trucks you're using, um, you know, mass DOT recommends two hundred pounds per lane mile. So when it's two hundred pounds per lane mile, I know there's some crazy mathematical equation when it comes in.
I know.
When it comes into the sand salt mix ratio, uh.
Are there separate regs for towns with municipal water versus towns with wells?
I'm I'm not exactly sure, I I went to the.
I mean, understanding OCAM as wells versus.
Yeah.
Mostly.
I went to um the snow and ice operations course that the um DC, I believe it was a DCR that holds it. Um, it was over by the reservoir in West Boylston, um, and, you know, a gentleman came. And sat down and explained to us the importance of um using salt and how to manage and use salt. Um, you know, when he was there and he was hearing what towns are doing and how they're doing it, you know, he he almost blew his lid. Um, it's just, you know, because there's the old saying of, you know, we have what we have and we're not gonna change. You know, when these people are in town, they've been in town a long time, they don't like change. Um, but he's, you know, came to show us of the proper way to use salt, um, the amounts that needed to be used. Um, you know, and basically, like, you know, he was saying, you you could put down the stay once, two hundred per, you know, pounds per lane mile. On say, a secondary road, um, you know, he basically sat down, told us, you can use a bag of salt. On a uh on a road, you know, and it would still do the same purpose, um. There are safer ways to use salt, the, you know, there's um different types of salt mixtures that are safer for the environment. Um, you know, and that's their, that was their whole goal because of the reservoirs and the water treatment plants that are around. Um, you know, that's the in the conservation, that that's the biggest goal, especially Holden being right next to the reservoir there. Um, and West's water supply, so, um, you know, they were big on us, hammering on us, um, you know, making sure all of our trucks came. Um, or they came and and calibrated, you know, we had a, we have electronic Sanders, so it's it's a little more different and. Modern than the old style hydraulic Sanders, but, um, you know, i- it's all comes down to calibration, the type of storm. Um, a- and the amount that should be used and what is used, um, you know, there's ways to make it safer. Um, a- and it just kind of go from there, especially trying to be cost-effective.
What's the best way to do pre-treatment, Andrew?
Uh, pre-treat, I mean, that's, it depends on the type of pre-treat that you wanna do, um. You know, you can pre-treat with sand salt mix, um, I would rather see. A sand salt mix maybe pre-treat before, say, a freezing rainstorm. Um, only because then, you know, the salt's already there, it's attached to the asphalt, um, you know, salt, it. I- it's kind of like, when it gets wet, it's it's like cement, um, if you've ever seen a salt pile that gets wet, it's like cement. So when it touches the asphalt, it does the same thing, with sand mixed in, it gives you uh that granular effect, which gives you more traction. Um, you know, the scariest moments in my life are are, you know, driving down hills at ten, fifteen miles an hour, trying to salt roads.
Yeah.
And there's black ice, especially when you're driving a forty to fifty ton truck, it's something you don't wanna mess around with. Um, you know, pre-treating i- is big, I think all towns should in look into pre-treating, you know, the state uses brine. Some other towns just use straight calcium mixed salt, some some towns use straight salt, some use sand salt mix. Um, it to me, it just depends on what the weather's gonna do, if a big storm's coming. Um, I would rather see a half an inch of snow on the ground and then you go out in sand and salt and then. Um, going to plowing operations, sometimes to me, um, which is a big thing in Holden too, is traffic. You put down sand salt and you put it down on the road and there's enough traffic, you just wasted all of that.
Yeah.
Because the traffic's just gonna run it right off the road. So we usually try to wait until the snow starts to fly and it starts to stick, it depends on ground temperature. If it's less than thirty-two degrees, then, you know, that's gonna be the time to go. Um, you know, it also comes to the to the effects of the the weather climate too, salt usually. Doesn't work as effective below fifteen degrees, so you get to that temperature and. You you're gonna start running into the issues and that's where sand really comes into it, is a big factor to use, you can use that small amount of salt. But that sand is there, at least for the plow trucks, hopefully, there's not a lot of traffic. Um, it's just because, you know, the 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 weather can change at any moment, you know, you get those snow squalls that come through and dump four inches. On the ground, nothing's really gonna help you until it's already down and it's over with, so, um. Being in Holden with the snow plowing and salting operations, um, you know, it gets. It gets very hectic, you know, there's a lot of roads in town, there's a lot of guys, there's a lot of equipment, Sanders, salt. Um, so I've got to know op- snow removal operations pretty well. Um, you know, we work a lot of hours, we're responsible for, you know, um. The, I'm not exactly sure the amount of road miles in Holden, but I know we have forty miles of sidewalk because. We sit in a much just sidewalk with six to eight inches of snow on the ground, you have to snow blow it about a half a mile to a mile an hour. Uh, after plowing for thirty hours, it's, you know you're there, so, um. You know, it's snow plow operations is is a big thing, you know, you have to be cost-effective about it, you have to be smart about it, you have to watch the weather. Um, and you just hope every everybody stays safe, you know.
Yeah, well, I've completed my list of questions, everybody else is set, okay, thank you so much for coming in.
Not a problem, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Do you have any questions of us though before you?
I do have one question before I go.
Okay.
The position that is posted, is it a contracted position?
Yes.
It is, is the contract negotiable?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Which is the positive, one second, one minute. We are ready to begin our second interview for Highway Superintendent with Timothy Bachelor. Who is with us today, and my first question to you, why did you apply to OCAM?
Why did I apply to?
Or why would you apply to?
Well, I just happened to buy some land in OCAM and I'm gonna be building a house at Eva, Eva Grimes's facility.
Oh, nice to meet you for that, yes, I heard that it had been sold.
Yes, in fact, we were.
Congratulations.
They were approving stuff at the planning board meeting, I haven't heard yet what happened last night at the planning board, but. That's uh one of the reasons I. I came back to the area, I'm from Northbrook Field originally, lifelong, well, before I went on my fire department adventures across the country, so. But I'm back uh back in New England and uh. It's time, I'm a, you know, I'm a foreman for a tree company, I've done that my whole life, I had my own business in Northbrook Field for twenty-six years and I was. Fire captain in Northbrook Field and I was fire chief in Westbrook Field at the, you know, up until two thousand nine, then I flew off and fought fire across the country.
So you're familiar with the area, been quite familiar with the.
Yes, I did all the tree work for all the the Brookfields, New Braintree, OCAM, Barry, Lester. I was around, worked for most of the highway superintendents here, uh, right from West Welly, like, when he was here. And then transformed to when, when Kevin took over. I know OCAM very well, know a lot of the folks in uh OCAM, I had a lot of good customers, Randy Packard was probably my best customer. Um, but I always worked for the highway departments in the wintertime, that was my winter job, and my father was a lifelong, um. Town of Northbrook Field, Highway and Water Department, he was a highway, uh, water superintendent. And ever since I was senior in high school, I actually worked for a Northbrook Field Highway up until two thousand four and then uh. I actually ran the town in New Braintree Highway Department for one winter, Bob Glidden came in, the selectman at the time, came and found me and uh we. They had a little trouble with highway superintendents, so I came and ran the department for six months until they got somebody in there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Along with my business.
What do you think then, with all this background that you have, that you are uniquely qualified? For this position?
Well, I had, I bring a lot of experience in public service and public safety, uh, I've been in this. Uh, my whole life.
Mm-hmm.
And. It's kind of in my, it's in my blood, plowing snow and doing roadwork and fighting fire, cutting trees, obviously, that's what I, that's my main business. Um. I've been fortunate in my career that I've learned what I did, I started at a very young age, uh, working with townspeople and public service. And. It's just kind of what I've done my whole life and I've got a lot of knowledge with. With the highway department, uh, like I say, I started at the bottom and I was, when I was a kid, sixteen years old, I started working for the highway, you know. Plowing snow and uh can did all the, everything from trash picking to. Sanding sidewalks with a shovel and shoveling sidewalks, so I know the business inside out when it comes, especially with machinery, you know. All up through the the machine, big machines, uh, sanding, trucks. And along that went with the fire service too, I, you know, I know fire equipment also and. Um, not only fixed it, but ordered it.
I was just gonna ask you that question that.
Yeah.
I know you can operate them, but can you fix them?
Yes, that's a, that was a, that's a big part of what I did is a.
Good.
Not only as a fire chief, but as in my own business, my own tree and land clearing business, I had big equipment and that was all needed to be repaired. Uh, as far as the fire, the highway department was was, you know, my second, it's second nature to what I did in, you know. Tree cutting business, along with fire.
Yeah, sure, okay, very good, thank you, John?
Tim, uh, what's your safety protocol when using machinery and chemicals?
Machinery and chemicals, as you mean, what kind of chemicals?
Road.
Road chemicals, well, OSHA standard is, there's a OSHA standard for everything and I run, I I deal with that on a daily basis myself. And uh, when it comes to like calcium chloride, bag chloride, you know, full PPE is very important. You know, eye covering, gloves, um, protective clothing, well, just like in the fire service, we, we use all our PPE. Uh, like I say, there is a standard and I think it's very important that we follow that. Uh, you still can get injured, I'm not saying accidents do happen, but we try to be very preventative. And uh, follow the standard PPE, um, rules and regs, they're there for a reason, yeah.
If several pieces of machinery don't fail at the same time.
It happens.
How are you gonna prioritize what gets fixed?
Okay, well. Just give you an example, if the if the loader goes down, that is, the loader is probably one of your main pieces of equipment that's. Versatile, you can use it for everything, to me, that and a backhoe. Are what mo- uh do most of the work in town, trucks, you can, you can get through with trucks unless they all break down. But in in that case, we, you know, we'd we'd figure something out, but uh loader, backhoe, they're your main priority to keep. Um. Keep on the road, I mean, that, as you guys know, that's how you load material, that's how you. Move snow, that's, it's. Move trees, move anything that you need to be lifted, catch basins that you're setting, uh, either the backhoe or the loader to set basins and. So that's my priority and I I don't think there's much left for uh. Dirt roads in OCAM, um, grader used to be the big priority, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Grader's kind of on a setback thing now.
True, true. Tell us about a time where you disagreed with a supervisor's direction and how did it wind up?
The supervisor's decision. Um, oh, probably on a, on a, an approach on how to do a a project, um. I've had to, we've had to have some words, uh, uh, talk it out and figure, say, well, this isn't the way I wanna do it. Even though I'm saying I'm running a mach- a machine to do a certain project, well, the boss wants you to do it this way, well. Okay, my past experience, this is how it was worked very well, well, the supervisor doesn't agree, so I would. Definitely, we're gonna have to come to an agreement to get the project done. Um, I'm all about working with people and working, working situations out. It's how, it's how work it's done, you've gotta, you've gotta come to a, you know, a happy medium.
As the superintendent, how are you gonna balance personal life versus work life?
Well. Superintendent's job is, as you know, it's very, it's it's demanding that you be around and. In my, in my career, that's, I've always been there and had to be around, so it's nothing new to me. I don't mind not, I've I've missed a lot of things with my kids, uh, events. Several Thanksgivings, several Christmases, it's, it's part of the job.
Yeah.
And uh, that's not a, it's not a major concern of mine because we're in a public service business. And the customers are the residents of OCAM and we need to. Serve the town of OCAM, that's what we're here for. I I would be available. I, I would be available twenty-four seven unless, you know, especially different times of the year. Uh, wintertime, I think it's important for the superintendent to be in town.
Yeah.
Or if for some reason you can't, there has to be a designated person that's gonna be there to, to take over for you and and make sure things happen, and you have some competent employees, I, I think there's some good competence.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um.
Sophie, have you ever encountered negative feedback from a homeowner, property owner, member of the public? And if so, how did you handle it?
Okay.
So this would be, I guess, in regards to, you know, highway department.
Yes, um, just a quick example, a few things, the, the biggest complaints usually with the highway are water issues, snow in the driveway, and hitting my mailbox. Yes, it, it, water issues are probably the main, the, the worst things to deal with, mailboxes, well, we'll fix it, you know, if there's a problem, we'll fix it. But when it comes to customer service, you know, I always like to find out details. I need to find out what, there may be some back stuff that I don't know about, so tell me, tell me your problem, are you mad at me, are you mad at the town, are you mad at the, you know, what are you, what, what's the problem? And I try to, if I can fix stuff without including, you know, oh, we're gonna call the selectmen, this, if I can fix something that's within reason, uh, you know, it's not gonna cost the town money or, or whatever, I, I'll try to do that. Um, but yeah, I've, I've had, you know, not only in the highway business, but in the fire business too. Uh, I've had some very unhappy customers with, why did you do this, why did you do that, well, once, once you try to inform somebody of something, why we did something a certain way, they didn't know that, give them a little information.
Then it goes a long way.
Okay, so in, in, in this business, you're never, never gonna please everybody, no matter what you do. Um, public services, unfortunately, sometimes you gotta swallow your pride and just, okay, and, and, and take it sometimes, but if I, but if you can you know, I always, I always said, if you always do what's best for the town, you you'll never have any problems, and if you tell, convey that to the, to the residents, hey, I'm doing this in the best interest of the town, if you don't think it is, you know, maybe you're gonna have to call the selectmen. Then maybe get a second opinion, not, not just my opinion.
See. So describe a public works, or in this case, which would be highway, a responsibility or a job or project that you were involved with, that you found very rewarding, you know, from start to finish, you know, what, you know, that you really felt good, good about when it was done.
Yeah.
How it was done, et cetera.
Uh, in, going back to my business, when I worked for the towns, working directly with the highway departments, when we'd re-go in and redo a road, mainly by me saying, we'd go in and cut all the trees, get it from opening up, you know, from, that was a little cow path, to, you know, road improvement project, so being involved with that from the start to the finish um, was always rewarding, cause every time I ride down that road after I, I got the project done, it always, I can always say, man, I, I really like how this came out, and I'm really proud of how, you know, what the highway, the, whatever highway superintendent I was working for, how they did the job and how good it came out, you know, as a collaborative effort, uh. I'm very, I take a lot of pride in my work, and I think if you talk to some of my past customers and past highway superintendents, uh, I, I really take pride in what I do, I do it very professionally, that's the way I am.
And the other question I had, you kinda answered it already with your, uh, kinda your opening statement a little bit, so I'll let that one go. Do you have any follow-ups or any further questions or?
Just a couple.
Okay.
How are you with computer work?
Basic stuff, I can do, you know, the word and just the basic spreadsheets and, um, I've always been a in-the-field working guy, I'm not, I'm buried, I, I'll admit, I am not a computer guy, I can just do, you know, email stuff and doing the forms for grant, grant, I've done, you know, I've done a lot of grant work with not the, not in the highway, but in the fire service, but it's all relative to.
Okay, you've never worked with chapter ninety?
Other than, no, other than filling the forms out, yeah, I did with the town of New Braintree, yeah.
Okay.
And during that time, and they're very, they're not that hard.
Because your job typically in Ocam is part-time superintendent, part-time worker.
Yep.
With the guys, so we've got to make sure you're able to do the office work.
Yes, well, the, the forms, you know, they're, they're very similar to other, the chapter ninety stuff, they're basic state, force state applications and I can get through that.
Yeah, and any other grants, you will be responsible to research any grants.
Yep.
Coming through. And you also responsible for the, anybody building, um, new driveways or fixing up their old driveways, you're also going to be responsible for permitting them.
Permitting.
For that as well, making sure they're placed correctly on their lot as they're entering, not too close to their neighbor's house and things like that.
Yep.
Okay, very good, um, another question that I had for you, um, how good are you with the WPA?
That's water, um, no, what's WPA?
Wetlands protect.
Oh, Wetlands Protection, Wetlands Protection Act, yeah, um, if anything, we're gonna be working in the, in the wetlands. Um, we're gonna have to obviously start with the Conservation Commission and mass, and the DEP. I know, when, you know, within a hundred, if we're gonna be working within a hundred feet of a wetland, we need to either apply for a permit, uh, and of course, again, I talked about the water stuff, there's always water issues, always, every, most of every project would have, probably have some type of water issue with it.
Quite a few.
Yes, and it's, it's a thorn, it's, unfortunately, it's a thorn in the superintendent's side.
I'm sure it is.
And I'm all about protecting wetlands, I I don't like seeing them, you know, destroyed, because this, Ocam has got a lot of recreation type land and I, I'm not big, seen big houses, housing developments and stuff, so hopefully Ocam can stay the way it is.
How can I, don't count on it. Oh, that's good, and also you'd be responsible through the wetlands and DEP for any hazardous waste that gets spilled along oil and things like that, you, you would be working with both agencies then at that time.
That would also involve fire also, with, especially if there's a spill.
Uh huh, yes, exactly, exactly, um, your thoughts on pre-treating roads before?
I'm a big advocate of it, if you have, if you have the right liquid and the right equipment to do that, um.
If you don't have the liquid?
We used to, I used, I used to pre-treat with salt, straight salt.
Straight salt?
That depends on, if that's what you had the material to use, straight salt, keep it wet, the and it depends on the temperature, depends on the type of snow that you're getting, there's a lot of variables.
What's the lowest temperature you would use salt?
Salt only, salt only works down to twenty, twenty degrees, we used to juice it up with, uh, calcium chloride or mag chloride.
Twenty degrees.
Twenty degrees, you get below twenty and salt doesn't work that, straight rock salt, just doesn't.
I thought it was closer to fifteen, but that's all right.
Well, once you get below twenty, that's close, that's close.
Okay, so you, you are, you do like to pre-treat, how far ahead of a storm coming, would you think?
Well.
Or wait for the first snowflakes to come?
I like to get out there just when the storm's starting and just get some stuff down, so it doesn't pack down, I guess, you get a wet snow and you get a lot of traffic, especially one forty-eight, I've seen, we've all seen our main roads get packed down because of traffic. Getting out there and, and getting your main roads done first, uh, and keep it sloppy, I like keeping it wet, you know, keeping the, the road slushy, uh, so you can peel it off.
Okay, and, um, what do you consider to be proper ratio between sand and salt?
Proper ratio, well, I can tell you fifty-fifty is what I always tried to do, um, on the main roads, sixty-forty on the side roads, um, and then lane, then lane mile, I had to figure, the state standard for the between two forty-ish, two hundred to three hundred.
Hundred two.
Two hundred to three hundred.
Right.
Pounds per lane mile, and again, that's, that depends on the type of snow, it's the type of storm, yeah, and what the temperature is.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, sometimes you can get away with straight sand, depending, if you have a cold, cold winter and and salt's not gonna work anyways, sometimes, you know, when I started out doing this, all we did is hills and corners, we didn't do all this. So, we didn't use, in Northbrook Field, we'd, I'll be honest with you, when I started, we didn't use salt, other than to keep the sand pile, um, from freezing.
From freezing, mm.
And then we had, we had salt, but all we'd use that for, I'd run the sander right down the middle of the road and it would just, especially the East Brookfield Road going into East Brookfield, and the same when I, when I worked for Brookfield Highway, one forty-eight, we'd run the, we'd run, um, salt right down the middle of the road. Times have changed, black asphalt, there, there's not a policy to keep it black, but that's what the public demands.
Yes, it, it really does, and, and Ocam, we do have a few people that are really concerned about the salt and how much salt is used.
Oh, I, I.
They, they question it about every year.
I deal with that every year, cause it kills the trees.
Well, more, yeah.
Yes, that and the.
Ocam is on wells versus Northbrook Field being town water and.
And we do have some wells that are very, very close to the roads.
Yep.
Why they put them there, I don't know.
And it's a, it's a hard balance to keep the road, keep the road plowed and ice free, well, you know, to keep them ice free, but very drivable, how's that?
Okay, Don, do you have further questions?
Nope.
You're all set. And you're all set?
Yeah, I think you covered the few remaining follow-up questions I had, so.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, very good, then I am also.
Do you have any questions?
If you have any questions for us.
I, I don't, other than I just say, I, I really like to look forward to working for the town of Ocam, if you guys decide uh, where I'm gonna be, you know, cause I'm gonna be living right down the hill here, we're gonna be building in the spring, whether I get the superintendent's job or not, I'm still building there. We're gonna try to bring Eva's place back to a nice-looking agricultural land, and it's just been twenty years since animals have been there and uh, there's gonna be a few animals there, probably third, twenty, twenty to thirty of my, my better halves, uh, show, show Ashia herd, they're all show cows.
Oh, very nice, very nice, yeah.
So.
We haven't seen those for a while out here.
No, I know, and, and like I say, my, my family and both my and my, my girl Amy, Wood is from Northbrook Field, we are all family friends with Eva, so I very, I know this property very, very well, I remember going in there when we were kids.
Be nice to see some commoner on the road again.
Yeah.
Well, that won't, that doesn't need to be, that, that won't happen, not, not in this operation.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know. But, um, that's all that we have for you, if you have any other questions.
Um, I had a question about, is this a contracted position or what, what, how do you?
Yes.
This is, uh, yeah, it's, it's not a, elected by, again, well, sometimes, some towns used to elect the highway superintendent. It is, it's.
Appointed with a contract.
With a contract, okay.
Yeah.
Good, that's what I, I wasn't clear on that, with how, how that was gonna work. And what is your timeframe, what are, what are you looking?
Yesterday.
Okay, cause I, I'm gonna need some time to, with my other, I have a very responsible other job that um, that's gonna need some time for me to, I've got jobs going that I'm gonna have to finish.
How much time do you think?
I need, I probably would need a month between that and get moved to, you know, get moved out of my, uh, I sold my house in, in Connecticut and I'm renting right, a house right now in anticipation.
Uh huh.
This, this going through, but I'm gonna, I need to, uh, be able to move, I have a place already, so.
I, I think our plan is to be able to handle winter.
Yeah.
That's kinda the bottom line.
Yeah, yeah.
For us.
And, yeah, I, I really, to be fair to my other, to the place I, I would be leaving, it, I'd, I'd need a, a month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that brings us to the middle of November, yeah, today's the fifteenth, so, middle of November, so Thanksgiving time, something like that.
Okay.
Then I could jump in at full throttle.
Only we still have to look for enough snowplump drivers.
Well, I got a few, a few on the back shelf that I might know.
But as of right now, I guess we have several coming back, um, you know, part-time.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, that's looking good.
Well.
We're not the best payers on it.
Well, small towns, it's, it's how it is.
It is.
You know, and it's four, the town's forty-three miles. You know, if you don't have everybody plowing, if you don't have enough drivers, we'll get it done, it's not, you know, prioritize, prioritize your, your roads and it'll get done. Phone may ring a little bit, but.
Probably be out plowing, there'll be nobody to answer it.
That's why, that's the best thing they ever had for an answer machine. But they track you down.
Oh, yes, they do, oh, yes, they do.
So I didn't have any other questions, uh.
Okay.
Now, I, I appreciate you, uh, even thinking of bringing me in to do this in, and also I, looking forward to, if this does happen, um, getting back in the fire department, so, be around, it's, I think it's important to have coverage during the day. And uh, being, you know, almost forty years in the fire, in fire business too, and I'm sure they'd like to have some help, I got a little knowledge in that too.
Sounds good, great, okay, thank you so much for.
All right, I appreciate it.
Maribel had a couple.
I'm coming.
Last night. Would like to address that, just under new business for tonight.
And I think I have one thing under office. New business, would it be considered new business, old business?
Oh, it's, it's new for us tonight.
Thank you.
It is.
Thank you, bye. Nice meeting you.
One would be.
Oh yeah, I have two pieces of, of information, so I didn't know. Lucy, you're under new business right now?
We're on new, new business right now.
Great.
Oh. So under new business, I know I sent the board this via email, you wanna pass one down to Don?
Oh, the red print.
Those are the answers.
Yeah.
So that way it's easy to distinguish. Um, this email originally came from the town accountant.
Yeah.
Um, just trying to clean up some of the accounts that were lingering, I know that, uh, we go down them, the who, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary account, that's gonna be closed out, that should have been closed out a year, no later than a year after the celebration, so that will need to be closed out um, at the next town meeting, as well as a balance that's remaining in the ambulance RRP and ambulance donations, because we no longer have ambulance services in town, that can all go to general funds, all three of those. Um, and then the community compact grant turned back was nineteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and nineteen cents out of the fifty thousand dollars that we were awarded back when our former town accountant was, uh, got the grant for the soft right, so that actually just went out in this past warrant, so that will be closed out.
Springbrook.
Correct, that will be closed out with the state, so that's good, so the only one that's lingering is the first one, if you look, is the wire inspectors, um, account. Um, she was looking to see what the breakdown for that is.
Right.
What's in the account currently, and, um, so I, I don't really have a lot of information on that.
So that's a revolving account?
There is a revolving account, yes.
Right.
He has a fifty thousand dollar cap on it.
I don't know.
So.
For, for his fee. For, for his fees, he gets seventy and the town gets thirty?
I know that that's the building inspector. Not sure.
I, I thought one year we went that they were all getting the same.
They're all getting.
Yes, except for the building inspector at that time that we, because we didn't have the same building inspector when we made that decision. Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I was wondering has this rolled over through multiple electrical inspectors?
Oh, my goodness.
So it's gotten to that that level of money in it because Dennis didn't work it, so he's not, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I, I don't. He's been doing it for a very long time, so I don't, I don't think anything in there is from somebody else.
This must date back for.
A lot of this is from the uh solar.
And he did all the solar projects.
That's why we increased it to fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Right. All right. So the other question is, is Dennis not put in for something that he should have put in for?
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
A lot of his. I mean, Maribel had, he's, he's up in Maine, I think, right now.
Okay.
So, but I think Maribel had a message out to him to clarification on his part. So we'll just have to wait till we see.
Wait, yeah.
Or till she hears from him.
Otherwise, might have to raise the fifty thousand cap. If it keeps going, because there were more and more houses and more and more people coming in that need an electrical inspector.
Well, when Maribel gets back, we'll see what Lori had for a recommendation on it as to whether to the general fund, a part of it, you know, once we talk to Dennis.
Sorry, I don't know if you can take anything out until it reaches cap and then put it into the town. You have to wait till.
I thought it was fifty.
Reaches the fifty. When it reaches the fifty, anything over the fifty can go back into the town, but not before it. And we're not, we're not quite up to the fifty yet, as I understand.
But it probably will be shortly.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
It could very well be.
Probably before the first of the year, I would think.
Yeah. Now, has Dennis put in for all of his?
I don't know. I don't know exactly his thought or how he does it. I know, for example, with the building inspector, he gets um, you know, any payment for permits that come in, he does deposit it, but then he doesn't put up for payment until it's completed.
Okay.
So I, I, and I don't know if that's, I, I think that's my, the same process, but I'm not really sure. I can't speak on that.
So you did send a message, but he is.
But if he's. No, I haven't, because I know he's in, but I will let him know. I'll reach out this week. I have not reached out to him.
Before he loses any of his fifty.
Yeah.
That would be the problem.
Well, this is a revolving account, so technically this should be zeroed out at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, if everybody's taking their cut.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just went through that with COA. An accountant. This is not a bank.
Right, right. We, I know we stress that many times.
Many times.
Many times.
Yeah, and that's why she thinks, seems to think that there isn't you know, something seems to be off that it has such a high balance and that.
That's the only reason why I wonder if, if some of this is carried over since before Dennis.
That, that could be.
Because then, and then in that case.
But I wonder what the balance was last year and the year before. Like, has it always been high? Yeah.
Figure that out.
Mm hmm.
Because that's not one year.
Correct.
Yeah, no. But you're right, though, it could, a lot of it from the solar farms.
There's a lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah, he did. He put in an awful lot of work, going out a lot of time.
So I'll reach out to.
Dennis.
And find out there too, and kind of touch base back with Lori, find out.
To see how.
What the balance are, yeah.
Okay. That sounds like a good point. So we'll put this in a folder for when the special town meeting comes.
Yeah.
For the.
She will, she recommended one article.
Article with all.
With all the, yeah, with all three of them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Maribel's gonna say yes, she'll start getting a folder together so that we have it all in one folder for special town meeting. Not just this, but for.
Yeah, everything.
Some of the other things we've talked about that need to go on it, so we don't forget anything.
Okay.
The other community compact one.
That's clear.
Fifteen grand, we spent fifteen grand.
Yes, yes, yes. That's all set. I was, I, I did hear back from Sean. Um, and the only amount that was owed was that nineteen thousand nine twelve, which, like I said, that just went out in this past warrant. I, I don't think we knew whose responsibility it fell on or, or who should have submitted it. It's all good. I, I reached out to, to Sean from the state. He's fine. I actually just sent him an email yesterday saying, this is the check number, it's cut, you'll get, you know, we're mailing it by the end of the week, so they're happy.
Okay.
Better late than never.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was just sitting there, so it's not like, you know, we didn't have the money, we didn't, you know, the town didn't spend it completely off that grant, so.
Yep. The election warrant's been posted.
Yes, she just did it. That's why I kind of went back and forth a couple of times.
Okay, good. You've got somebody that's good. Okay. Any other new business?
And then my other piece of new business is I have two two reimbursement requests, um.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
From the town hall study committee, one for Phil Orbass, one for Tom Sopay, um, for the ma, the wi, uh, the mailing. So just didn't know where that would be coming from.
Hmm, it would have to, because we never gave them any money.
And the Phil.
Set up their committee.
I did not total them. Phil's portion is two hundred and fifty dollars for printing. And then Tom's is um, one eighty seven thirty two.
I figured it was been, it's pretty close to four hundred.
Thirty two. Okay, so that's a thirty seven, so that's two, six, seven.
Priceless stamps are going up again.
Thirteen, two, three.
It's gonna be a dollar or eleven.
So I just want to make sure that my math is good. I'm pretty sure it is. Um. I believe it's four thirty seven sixty two, but let me just confirm. Four thirty seven sixty two, that it's correct, that's the grand total.
So make a motion. Make a motion to use four hundred and thirty seven dollars and sixty two cents from ARPA to cover the cost of the printing uh, for the town hall study committee survey that was mailed and for the postage to mail them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Surveys come back, we know.
Yeah, we had.
Yeah. It was a hundred forty seven that came back, wasn't it?
No, it was.
Hundred forty three?
It was, I believe, a hundred and seventy eight.
Seventy eight.
Came back. And there were a hundred and forty three in support of renovating the town hall. Thirty respondents said do nothing with anything.
Now, there, I a hundred and seven to do the town hall.
To renovate.
To renovate the town hall and forty seven to build new.
Yeah.
And that's.
Is that not it?
Yeah, and then forty seven to build a new building and thirty to, to do nothing.
So one oh seven to renovate and
a lot of questions on what it's tax.
We're not going to know that yet.
We're never going to, not that, not till we have feasibility study done.
Feasibility study that, once he's done with that, then we can have the estimate.
Yeah.
There's no way to do it right now.
No, no. But is it going to affect taxes?
It's a dead exclusion. It has to be a dead exclusion.
Has to be.
No.
So, I mean, Tom uses uh, I think back up in Canada, but after the, the meeting on the eighth, he was going to um, try to touch base with Peter Durant. And Donnie Bertham. You know, to, to let them know this info, because that's what they had recommended to do.
But their reps were here last.
Yesterday.
Yeah, but they didn't say, I, I didn't see.
Nobody came to meet with them?
No, they're actually, they just not meet the new office hours today. I'll have to post it, but I'll let you know what those are, so that way.
Somebody would be there to tell them that, that's it.
Well, I think Tom has probably already touched base with them.
Okay.
Um. But I haven't seen Tom since then to see what the response was. Because that was their recommendation, the two of them, was to do this to get a feel for it.
Right.
And then to proceed um to figure out a state grant for the feasibility architectural engineering study.
Mm hmm.
Because they, they do have to show that the town is willing to agree to it and, and support it. You don't get that from the town, you get nothing.
Because it's a waste. They, they want it.
Yes.
Now, if you do the feasibility study in um, and Peter Durant said that, yeah, once you get to that point, you do the study, you know, if you get a grant, state funds it, the grant or a share of it. Um, and then it becomes obvious the town doesn't have the type of revenue to do what you're trying to do. You either scale back or, but the state is okay with you know, if the town votes it down at that point.
Yeah.
Yes.
They, they don't, they don't get their get upset with going through all that work in Boston, because you've done this part of it.
Yes.
Yeah. So then they realize that it's up to the voters.
Yep.
So.
Yep. And they're coming on the nineteenth, just so you guys know, November nineteenth, eleven thirty, eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
And that's both Berthams and.
That's both their, Jonathan Palmer and Jared.
The nineteenth?
Of November.
Okay.
It's a lot of Jareds.
Yeah.
Notice that?
I know, it's just a common thing. That year, right?
I don't know.
I think we're just sold business now.
Just speaking just about the stamps that we were just talking about.
Yeah.
For the mailing of that, the mailing of everything that you have to send out for elections with the prices going up, we may, it's going to be tight in our line items for mailing, because the stamps just keep going up. We're sending out more and more, more and more coming back. We need lots of stamps.
We, we need a stamp machine.
Mm hmm.
Because we get a discount on the number of stamps.
Okay.
That go out.
So we're going to have to figure out maybe doing something like that for the secretary, town clerk?
Yeah.
For?
The automatic stamping.
I know, I haven't, we, we've, I feel like we've done this, like, we've looked at.
We did, but we didn't make a decision because too many things are going on.
Right. I know, we've mentioned it.
So circle back, yeah.
Yeah.
Or in the meantime, you know, another consideration, if she needed bulk mailing or bulk stampage for now, you know, there's always ARPA. I'm just saying, like, in, in, in a case of.
I don't know.
By the machine, too.
That is true.
Yeah.
I don't know if, I think that, wasn't it, um, was it, I can't remember, buyout or was it a lease, kind of like the printer?
You can do either one.
Yeah, okay.
If you buy it out, then you have a maintenance agreement.
Because then you have to go somehow, like, add the funds to it, because that was the.
Electronic data.
That was the question of how, you know, oh, well, this one wants to use it. I'll just throw one bill here, but then whose budget really is it going to fall under? Maybe remove the, all the postage budget and put it in one. But again, making sure that no one's taking advantage of anything, which I don't think that's our case, but I'm just saying, I think that those are some of the concerns that were um, brought up last time.
You have to have a code to get into it to begin with, so who we give the code to is responsible.
Yeah.
Hmm.
You know, your code wouldn't be the same as mine.
And I guess they can kind of track, like, yeah, how many pieces of mail you sent out.
Oh, sure.
Even if it's just the basic postage, you know, we don't need to get into, you know, certified letters, because that brings in a whole new layer of funding and just capabilities.
Yeah.
But.
Fortunately, this fiscal year, we will have only three elections, not like last year.
Not like last year.
Yeah, not like last year. So it should be a little easier, but still.
Because I know she just.
Going up.
Yep.
It's not easing on, on our budget at all.
And I know that the town clerk, she just um, I believe, put in a reimbursement for postage.
Yeah.
And it was pretty hefty that she paid it out of her, you know, prepaid it and, you know, granted, you're going to get reimbursed, but it's still a lot to ask of anyone.
It was between four hundred to eight hundred, wasn't it? It was four oh four.
Believe it.
But, yeah, but she still has more to go.
Yeah.
She's not done mailing out, because we're still continuing until the election day.
Yeah.
So Saturday is the first day of early voting.
Yes.
Yeah, at ten AM.
Yeah. And I've listed it up there. I put it on Facebook. I, I already had had it. Why, well, Chris put it, excuse me, Chris put it on somewhere on the clerk's page. Um, but I put it on the sign outside last week. I shared it on social media today. I put a sign at the door.
Do we, do we need any of the orange signs put out, the large orange sign?
I don't have that. I just made up a sign with early voting and the dates and the time, you know, and just put it up on the window. Yeah.
Yeah.
At the town hall door.
We need to do the sign.
Oh, yeah, that's on the sign as well.
Okay.
But I also put like a paper copy on the door.
The big orange one.
Yeah, that goes out to one forty eight.
Those days.
I'm sorry, one twenty two, forty eight.
I know.
I think everybody knows it's election time, but I just never know that they know which dates.
I, I don't know if.
Are early voting, mail-in voting.
On that one, though, that's the tricky part.
Small one you can, big one you can.
I know that um, there's a sign at the intersection that says intersection change coming soon as of today.
Oh, really?
Today I sent out a reminder and it was John, I don't know who signed, I don't know if that's police's sign or it's highway sign, they don't have one, right? So I'm assuming it's the one that the highway uses, you know, um, throughout, so it is there now.
Oh, good.
Right. Um, I think Maribel ordered new flags today.
Yes.
Well, because I took that, the one was shredded from the wind on Saturday. We didn't have any spares. We do, that was the last one.
We used them all.
We'll have one up for better, for voting day.
Oh, we'll have it. I, I don't know about Saturday. I ordered it today, so we'll.
Oh, yeah, we don't have any extra, but to one side, just in case.
That was the last one.
That was.
That was extra.
I think I had given the last one or two to get to put it up and.
I, I just think it's funny to have a voting without a flag out there.
Well, hopefully it comes before Saturday, though.
It was all right Friday morning. But after the wind this weekend, it was shredded to pieces.
Yeah.
So.
Terrible.
We ordered what the last time? You ordered like three and three, three of the storm flags and three of the holiday flags. So we went through them all. Good. So we went through them all, good.
Wow.
But.
Wow, but it is windy up here, I do have to say that.
Can Lori give us the state numbers that have been approved? I have nine different versions of state numbers. As they go through.
Are you surprised?
What our final number is.
I don't know that they have one, do they, do they?
Yeah.
They do, okay.
Yep.
I will ask her.
Governor's signed off, governor has signed off.
Okay.
That's the one we need. It's October sixteenth, so by twenty six preparation. Gonna start within a month.
Oh, absolutely.
Wailing and gnashing of teeth coming up.
Well, we've been not so much the last few years. But we're, we're tied every year, but this one is particularly tight.
Yeah, this is gonna be a problem.
Yeah, do we all have any machines and calculators? We need them all to figure out every last dime that we can get.
Did you see Tim's note on the fire inspections?
Yes.
All the buildings except for PD were certified.
Yes, ours is gonna be Tuesday. And I.
Stop here in case he doesn't make it home for work.
Cause I will be coming in just a little late that morning, I have to take my daughter, her well visit, but. He works his overnight, his twenty-four, the night before and gets out that morning.
Oh.
And he's like, I shouldn't be there, but every time I have a commitment, something always happens and I'm running late, so.
Yeah, called Massachusetts turnpike.
Yeah.
Traffic.
Yeah. But so we'll be fine, and then it's just waiting for PD, I think that they use a different. Do they use a different company? Cause I don't think it's the same company as what the town hall fire in library use.
I'll guarantee you, it's never been done.
Oh, I don't know about that, I've just, I don't know, I was going with it's a different company.
We'll find out. Old Business.
I just have one on Old Business because we entertain the. Group from North Brookfields, because they called and have wanted to meet with us, which is fine. We must keep in mind that Barry also reached out to us. And they had a particular way of setting up their program that they wanted, they did not want to address the entire board of selectmen.
So you're volunteering.
So they.
Nice.
No, my volunteer.
She volunteered you?
They wanted their chairman of their board of selectmen. They wanted their director and they wanted their, uh, town manager.
I don't know if they said the director, Lucy, maybe, but I definitely the town man, the town administrator and the chair. I don't remember the, the director part, but it could be.
Okay, it was, yeah, three.
That makes sense.
And we, well, for us, we don't have a.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, maybe that's.
It was the town manager in board of selectmen.
Town administration.
You don't have that either.
I know.
They might, they might have to be flexible with us.
Yeah, they do, they do. So I just wanted to, you know, say, I think we should move forward with that, notify them that. We can, you know, set up a meeting with them, since we've done one, we need to do anybody else that is interested in merging with us. I, I got the feeling that they thought they really got it pretty well sewed up, but we can't say that because we haven't met.
You've met with Barry.
We haven't met with Barry and we haven't heard from Rutland yet.
And because.
Okay.
They.
When Austin comes back, maybe, but we'll hear from them, I thought maybe their director, Mike, try to contact us. Or she could have mentioned it to one of her select people.
I, I think Austin is back, cause he sent a, sent an email actually that I'm gonna report on, um, that. Uh, let me read it, cause I can't, it's about, uh, a grant that was, um, received for a feasibility. Uh, study to do the district model.
On dispatch.
On dispatch, through the call-in center.
Yeah.
Or using the call-in center, so which will be great.
Here's the good part about that, nine one one is funding that study.
Oh, are they? Okay.
That tells you right there, we have the backing at nine.
Yep.
It's huge.
Um, yeah. He emailed yesterday saying that he's pleased to share. Town has received notification from the state nine one one department that they will provide support for the study. At no financial obligations to our communities, which is great, the department has assigned a liaison from the Collins Center to assist us with the study. Uh, we anticipate a kickoff meeting to be scheduled over the next several weeks.
Good.
So with this, if this ever goes to this district model, it won't be Rutland being strictly the host.
Right.
Every community involved will have a seat.
Yeah.
At voting.
Yeah.
Um, so what will that entail? Would it be a new building? Would it be changing, the name would change? You know, that's all down, down the road, but these are the first steps to possibly go on that route.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's no harm in do, in going through with this, uh, I, I think. Especially that there's no cost to the town to see if this is something that's even feasible for.
Right.
Ocam or any of the other communities.
Yeah.
It's, it's a better model than what they've been operating on.
Yeah, and it's nice to have a voice.
Right now.
At the table.
We have no say.
Yeah, and although they're great to come, to try to fit in and say, you know, we're not comfortable with this, and they. Do these quarterly meetings, you know, I, I have to give them kudos to that, that they tried to make sure that all involved are happy. But when it boils down, they really are the only ones that have the final say.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, so I think it's, it's big of them to say, yeah, let's, let's explore this, let's, you know, everybody have a, a piece of the.
Yeah.
Of the voting and, and, oh, you know, a say in any decisions.
No.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good thought on their part to be willing to do it, I think. Hopefully people will be more, will be happier, I was gonna say more happy, but that doesn't sound happier.
Coming from a teacher, no.
More satisfied anyway, yeah.
Oh, burn.
But I, I just wanted to check with everybody on the board that, um, it's all right to go forward with Barry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And is there a particular board member?
I was just gonna say, is anybody would, would like to volunteer?
I think you'd do a heck of a job, let's see.
I concur.
I think you've been nominated in second.
It's good to have the chair from Ocam talk to the chair from.
Barry.
Barry. Thank you.
They both have educational backgrounds.
Yeah, and we have. A committee a few years ago, yes.
Maintain eye contact with more.
Yes.
You'll be good to go.
Yeah, no, I, I had discussions with Molly and other things before, so it's not that I'm new to her or anything, she knows who I am, I know who she is, that's fine.
So I will email the town administrator tomorrow and let her know.
Okay.
That Ocam is willing to meet, if they're still open to that, and kinda go from there.
And, and set up a date and just let me know when and where I should be.
Sure.
We could meet here, we can meet there, I, it, it doesn't matter to me, whatever is good for you to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm fine any, anytime, I'll, I'll see what, you know, what her schedule.
Morning, I'm wide awake in the morning, I think.
Same, same, okay, yeah, I will reach out to her.
Yeah, cause I, I, I would really like to see what they have to offer or what they're looking for. Cause it works both ways, you know, I didn't, from North Brookfield, I didn't get what they're looking for from us. They're offering us, well, we have this, 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 this and this, but then it was like, well, what do our people have to? Go with them to go over there other than to say, hey, I'm here, you know? They, they should be a part of it somehow, because I, I know with Barry. Barry and Hardwick, they each have their own council on aging.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the director then charges to mediate between the two of them. I don't know that that's what North Brookfield to have in mind.
Yeah.
I, I didn't get that feed from them, I, I didn't, I wasn't gonna ask, cause it felt like I was pushing too much. So I figured, you know, get the general idea, and that's why I asked for him to get back with the finances and things, cause. He said, well, about this, well, about, when we were setting up a budget, we can't have, well, what about, hmm, it'll be approximately twenty-five dollars when it's forty.
Right, right.
Or something like that, so I, I, so we really do need to have a little more of the, the finances from that one, but he said he'd have them.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at them.
And if I may, I think with North Brookfields, because they're not regionalized currently, this would also be new for them. There's a little bit of.
Learning.
Negotiation and compromise, what would work for both communities versus. Not that Barry wouldn't be open to that, but they've already established with another town, this is how we do it here, so we would concur. With Ocam, the way it's already set up.
Yeah.
So I think that that's the difference in even asking that question, they probably be like, oh, you know what, I didn't think of it, do we do two council on agents? Do we have merge into one?
Exactly, I don't know that they had that idea.
Yeah.
That, you know, we need to, if, if we're gonna move forward with all three of them or whatever, you know. We just have to keep going and say, what about this, what about this, with each of them, until we come to a decision as to. Whether we wanna go that way or whether we don't wanna go that way at all.
Mm-hmm.
If they wanna just tone back, still have downstairs, still go out to do their exercises.
Can they, Barry, can they send us a copy of the MOU with Hardwick?
I'm sure, I'm sure it's public information, so I'm sure we should be able to get a copy from them.
See how they get it organized.
Right. Because I, you know, I was confused at the beginning when they joined, you know, and I kinda thought it was gonna be mainly. Barry taking over with the director part of it, cause I don't think Hardwick came with a director.
No.
At all, because they got their director, so. It, it, it'll be a different way of working with, I, I don't know, but they would, they did divide into a Barry and a Hardwick. I don't know if they both had chairman on, on there, I'm sure they must have. You know, and then get together on ideas, or this one comes with its own ideas, because they actually had their own meeting time. It would be Hardwick's time at this, I think Hardwick had the afternoon and Barry would meet in the morning and like that, but they would have separate times. For their meetings for each of the towns. So that we would still need, you know, when, if they went to Barry, they would still need to stay as. A council, an Ocam council on aging, it's just that their money for the grant would go to Barry. And I, I don't know how much extra.
Yeah, yes.
And I, you know, we'd, we'd, they'd have to work through that, because we have Zumba and Barry does not. They have, I think they have Tai Chi though, a lot of people like Tai Chi, and they have yoga, I'm pretty sure.
Don't mess with what I'm seeing this.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's what I, I just wanted to check with everybody to let you know that this is what I was thinking to do is to move forward with it, with Barry. And then if we don't hear from Rutland within the next week, do we reach out to them again? Then Paul down again to talk to them, because he was the one that did the original.
I can ask Austin.
Yeah, just send them an email.
I mean, maybe just the question of Austin just getting back.
Yeah.
And getting caught up, so let's see what.
Or whether the director from Rutland even mentioned it to him, we, we don't know. Cause, cause Paul only talked to the director. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, that's what I'm wondering.
Send them an email, let's see.
That's the easiest way to.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause then, you know, if we're gonna move forward with these two, we would also have to move forward with them and have them. Come to a meeting or meet separately. Yeah, I think that's the easiest way to go forward. Okay. And, and, you know, like I said, they've got four choices right now, we think they have four choices. I don't know which way they're leaning, I know at their last meeting, they were even talking themselves about different choices too, so. They're gonna have to work out what they're thinking.
Yeah.
And then we, we get the final decision, cause everything comes by us and we look at the money. And then we go to finance committee and say, what do you think? And the finance committee says, hmm, hmm, whatever. Between the two groups, we'd have to make a decision.
So.
That's all I have on that topic, but I just wanted everybody to know that we're going forward.
What's our next line, Old Business?
That was Old Business.
Okay, so the other thing.
We're still on Old Business.
All right, Old Business as of this morning, uh, Maribel sent out to KP Law to. Sharon, uh, no response, and to David. Um.
No.
Charter.
No.
They took the two things, Skyline Drive.
Okay.
And Charter, no response, right?
Not, not, not yet.
Updates to follow.
We're now in our third month, fourth month. How much have we spent on town council?
Need to check. That's what we discussed last night was.
I don't think we spent that much yet.
I don't think all the bills are in yet either.
Mm-hmm, correct, they do monthly.
That's what we kinda discussed last night was paying these new bills coming in.
Yeah.
With the remaining ARPA, so that we don't turn any back to the federal government.
Right.
January first.
Yeah.
With the remaining.
Any. Indefinite, like any bills coming in to be from ARPA moving forward, or.
Well.
Or you can even.
I would say these, these two projects.
Just, yeah, this.
Yeah, cause they, they give around.
But we can even go post, because if you, if the board wanted, um, even if they've been paid from. Already with that line item, she can make corrections.
Adjustment on the, uh.
If, if you wanted to, or just move forward.
That's not a bad idea either.
Well, I mean, we've got roughly eighteen thousand unencumbered in the ARPA.
Mm-hmm, nineteen now.
Nineteen, so, you know, we're.
Oh, now deduct this, yeah.
To deduct from the study committee, which is.
It's, yeah, it's still be like nineteen thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
And then. You know, you discuss maybe, you know, stamps for the town clerk, backfill that.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, it's just in increments of hundreds, not thousands, but.
Right.
So we should get like a tally sheet of.
And if the stamps are something that the board wants to do, you know, it's kinda the, one of those things to let the town clerk know.
Yeah, I wanna check with her.
Get these stamps or buy so many, you know, designate five hundred dollars, whatever the, the case might be. To buy stamps or get a ta, a number from her first before making the, a vote on a.
Those are the forever stamps, yeah, so if you went out bought a thousand dollars worth of stamps for the town clerk.
Yeah.
Going forward, they'd be good next year or the year after that, right?
That's true.
Do they have an expiration date?
Not the forever.
That's what I didn't think, but then I said, you know, with the post office?
No.
I'm afraid they're gonna start putting a cutoff. The, I would think they would.
Yeah.
This, um, salary maybe?
Four.
Oh, no, I'm saying like for any, um, future projects that will accrue more time. From ARPA. Like with the VEDAR project.
Well, that was the other one.
I, um. I had suggested, or, or mentioned, I, that'd be up to you guys.
So what? Why don't you run through?
No, I just wanna, I wanna let you know.
Ran by me this morning.
I just mentioned it when we were on there, yeah, I'm just thinking with, with ARPA being obviously time sensitive and needing to be, and we have this VEDAR project coming up. That might accrue more time for certain departments, treasurer, collector, to put in more hours. Within a certain timeframe, maybe pay some of that salary from ARPA, so it doesn't go over the line item budget.
Yeah.
Even in, like, you know, not necessarily my, my office, but, you know, the treasurer collector, she's gonna be putting in. An additional, let's say, I don't know, twenty hours, you can backfill, you can even pay for. Old payrolls, again, make those adjustments so that way, and, and, you know, it'll be more available and not run out of money. And need a, a transfer, because we know we don't have that.
You just stuck memory on that VEDAR stuff, why aren't we buying another license with the?
Well, that's up to the board.
It's up to the board, cause it, it comes.
It comes at four.
Well, that was so Maribel can see it.
Right.
On her.
Well, we need an answer, and the accountant's not here, or the treasurer's not here, or assessors are not here.
Something quick and.
Something quick.
What you're able to look at now.
Like, like you can do it now.
Yeah.
You know, I think that office needs to have a license.
And I don't know if it's a license, a one-time fee of the license, or if it's a reoccurring fee. I, I think that the four license that come with the package initially, it's a one-time thing, I, I believe.
Yes.
Or it, it's probably part of the reoccurring yearly fee.
Yeah, this, I was gonna say, the yearly fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so now, now would be the time to do it.
Right.
So that it's on the initial bill, not after.
Exactly.
It'll be more expensive to do it afterwards.
So we have.
Right from the start.
Okay, um. License. Okay. And then stamps, but um that I can get some numbers from the town clerk first before. And we can always put it on our next agenda for these official vote with numbers.
Right.
Okay.
With council, my madam budget.
Oh, how much has been spent so far?
Well, maybe get an estimate of what's coming our way. For the last. You know, with Charter and.
Yeah, I don't know. Bones need to be silent. You do it at all times. Well, the sound at least has changed.
Lunchtime, like it is.
What do you, I used to say.
We're all eating. Nothing, what is that? What is that? The computer from elder services wanting to get her attention or whatever from the town of Rutland. I guess the water main has broken, whatever, they're sending out a warning or whatever. That's why you hit this sound down. I'm going, no, wait a minute, I'm hearing.
Next week is an off week, correct?
Next week is an off week.
Okay. Anybody's got anything else? Motion to adjourn. Wait a minute.
We have one more thing. Yep, we just had these interviews.
Oh, yeah.
Taken any action.
Got so cut up.
We haven't even had time to think about the candidates.
Right.
So if we take the time and meet next Monday for a quick. Discussion and appointment to whatever decision.
How do you want to make that discussion?
Just like this.
Just like this.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
Oh. There's o, early voting that day.
On the twenty first?
I think, I think from six to seven, because it's her office hours. Let me see. Yep, six to seven.
Didn't we discuss meeting either? Fire station. Conference room or.
Or, I mean, I think you can, with a laptop, you can do it.
Oh, that's true too, yeah.
So let's plan on that. That way this is free for voting.
Okay.
At that same time period.
Yeah.
Cause people will be coming and going out.
Yeah.
Both doors.
Yep.
Instead of trying to set up at that table.
Just make sure Tim doesn't have training that night.
Or you can just do Tuesday or Wednesday, but I know you probably want to do it quicker. Actually, I mean, not that I need to be present by any means, but I would not be able to.
A regular meeting Monday, it would just be for that one item.
Right.
So you could do it before Monday night training.
Or you can do it before early voting.
I was just gonna say, we could do it anytime.
Well, that's kind of what's getting it. We could, but she's gonna have this room set up. So I don't know what the disruption is gonna be for, so we could use, because we were talking about. The twenty eighth was also. Is the following Monday was a, and we were talking.
But she made it clear in her email that she, it was okay with the uh. With the selectmen unless you guys prefer. That's why we moved it to Tuesday instead of the twenty eighth, the board decided to just do Tuesday, the twenty ninth, so it doesn't interrupt.
Right.
Anything, just just to be, you know.
So Monday's voting is in the evening.
Six to seven.
So the whole day is is free.
So we could do.
So whatever time is convenient for you to, you just tell me what time on Monday.
Yeah, I'm free all day.
Oh, I don't care. It's up to you guys. I just won't. Oh, gosh.
I'm I'm free all day, except I have to be here for lunch.
Good.
Cause I I I meet with them downstairs.
So at ten in the morning.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, time. The fire people are coming Tuesday, so it'll be.
Right.
So no conflict there.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
One last item. On your sheet.
One last item.
Public session.
Public session? Anybody? Public session?
Public session?
Anybody?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Six oh five.
That's my kind of meeting.
They went way longer than it.
That was two hours.
You didn't put a journo on.
I know.